Welcome to the Scottsdale Planning Commission Public Hearing. The city encourages your interest and participation in the public hearing process. The Planning Commission is an advisory board to the City Council on Land Use and Zoning Matters. The meeting agenda items are development applications that require public hearings. The Planning Commission considers the request and makes a recommendation for or approval of the denial to the City Council. The City Council makes the final decision for or against approval of the application. The agenda consists of the roll call, minutes approval of the prior meeting, continuances are for items that will not be heard tonight, withdrawals are for items that have been withdrawn from any further consideration, consent agenda is for items not likely to require presentation or discussion, all items on the consent agenda may be voted on together. Any Commissioner may move an item from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. Regular agenda is where each item includes a presentation and recommendation by staff, a presentation by the applicant, and public testimony. After the applicant will have the opportunity to respond to the public testimony. The Planning Commission then discusses the case and votes. Non-action is for items for discussion, but no vote will be made by the Planning Commission. Citizens wishing to speak on any agenda item may fill out a blue speaker card, or if not willing to speak, may fill out a yellow comment card and turn it in at the staff table before the agenda item is to be discussed. The chairman will call you by name when it is your turn to speak. When called, come to the podium, state your name and address, and then begin speaking. Groups wishing to speak should elect a spokesperson to represent the views of the group. To facilitate the meeting, your comment will be limited to three minutes for individual speakers, one additional minute for each additional individual present at the meeting who has contributed their time to a representative speaker up to a total of 10 minutes. Please format your speech to be accommodated with an applicable timeframe given. For convenience and timing presentations, a light system is installed on the podium. The light will be green for two minutes and yellow for one minute. Please conclude your comments when the red light appears. Thank you for your interest and time, and now we will begin the meeting with a roll call.
Okay. Chair Alessio.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith, absent. Commissioner Brolinger.
Here.
Commissioner Higgs, absent. Commissioner Serena.
Present.
Commissioner Fauci, absent. Commissioner Kush.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, ask for approval of the August 29th regular meeting minutes, including the study session? Ask for a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kush. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Serena. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We only have, we don't have any items on the consent agenda tonight, and we only have two items on the regular agenda that are both related, so we'll hear the two items on the regular agenda together, item number two and item number three, 13ZN 2018 Museum Square and 1AB 2019 Museum Square. We'll have a presentation by staff. Mr. Clough.
Good evening, Chair Alessio and members of the Commission. I'm Brian Clough with the city's planning department. This is Museum Square, case 13ZN 2018 and 1AB 2019. The subject site is located in our downtown area on Second Street in Marshall Way, and it is a relatively large project site, so you could also see the Goldwater Boulevard here on the south loop with the site highlighted in yellow. Here's a closer look at the subject site, so you can see some of the context with the Scottsdale Museum of the West, the Scottsdale Artist School, and the Stagebrush Theater in the vicinity with the intersection of Marshall Way and Second Street here. The applicant currently owns this portion of the property here, and the rest of the subject site, along with the Artist School and Stagebrush Theater, is owned by the city of Scottsdale. And the applicant and the city have entered into a purchase and sale agreement for the remaining site area that's under city ownership. And this is a large project with a lot of moving parts, and there's several, there's several items related to the project that are more part of the purchase and sale agreement and other items, and not specifically with regard to the zoning request. So I would just ask that the Commission try to focus on the discussion and the components of the actual zoning request. And moving forward, the specific request tonight is a recommendation to the City Council regarding a zoning district map amendment with a development plan and amended development standards for a amendment from the downtown, downtown multiple use type two district already in the plan block development and downtown overlay, and also the downtown office commercial type two plan block development district requesting to zone to the downtown, downtown multiple use type three with the plan block development and downtown overlay. And the Commission will be reviewing this against the Planning Commission criteria for a PBD overlay district in the type three area, and then also the associated right-of-way abandonment request. This is a zoning map showing the existing zoning designation, so the downtown multiple use type two is in this area here, and then the office commercial type two down here. And then the proposed zoning map showing all of it downtown multiple use type three with the plan block development and downtown overlay. This is the subject site located relative to the Old Town Future Land Use map and showing the downtown multiple use category, and the subject site in the Old Town Development types identifying in the purple area the type three development type. This is the proposed site plan for the Museum Square development. So it consists of five new buildings, noting that the Artist School building and the Stagebrush Theater is not a part. There's a proposed hotel here with 150-foot building height and approximately 190 rooms, three residential condominium towers along the southern portion here, and an apartment building, building number four, on the east side of Second Street. And a couple items to note on the plan, this portion of the site called the Museum Square Plaza is a large open space area that will be a public plaza that will be constructed as part of the development, and all the parking, all private parking for the project will be provided below grade in parking structures. This is a pedestrian circulation plan associated with the development, just showing some of the pedestrian linkages in the area. A couple items to point out. Again, the, oops. Again, the, the public plaza space here with connections up through Main Street and down to Second, as well as a strong pedestrian linkage that will be going through the center of the site here. The applicant will be providing public access easements through these, this portion of the site to get access directly from Main Street all the way down to Goldwater, where there will be installed a pedestrian crossing here with a hawk-style pedestrian beacon. And then this area here at Second and Goldwater, there will be a new traffic signal. This is a plan identifying the proposed building setbacks, and these are all consistent with the downtown ordinance requirements with no amendments proposed. So on Second Street, a 20-foot setback will be provided for all buildings along the street, and then Goldwater Boulevard, a 30-foot setback, and that is again consistent with the standard ordinance requirements. This exhibit here identifies the proposed building heights. I mentioned previously the hotel at 150 feet here, and then you can see the three residential towers, the center tower here being the tallest at 149 feet, 135 for residential building one, and 139 for residential building three. So the main height will be focused to the center of the development. This exhibit also shows how proposed stepbacks are being provided adjacent to the perimeter of the development on Goldwater Boulevard to provide transitions to the street as well as into the type two area adjacent to the south, and then residential building four at 75 feet. The next few slides are going to be some highlights of the proposed building stepbacks en masse-ing, and a couple notes on amended standards that are being requested. This is the hotel building located north of Second Street. So this section taken right here is where the building is closest to the street, and the dash green line represents the standard downtown ordinance stepback requirement, and the green line represents the requested amendment. You can see the 20-foot setback provided here, and the building is actually step, setback substantially more than that 20 feet minimum. Here are a couple conditions for residential building one and residential building two along Goldwater. So you can see the proposed building meets the stepback that is required by the downtown ordinance without amendment. And then one last condition for residential building one on Second Street, and then residential building three on Goldwater, and then there's a similar condition on Marshall Way where, again, the dash line is showing the downtown ordinance requirements, and then the solid line, the requested amendment, and the 20-foot setback being provided as required by the code. And residential building four on Marshall Way, again, meeting, meeting the requirement without amendment, and that is taking into consideration the 15-foot exception that is allowed under the code, which that lighter dash gray line is representing. This is a quick summary of the project data for the development. I'm going to run through this pretty quickly. The, the gross area of the site is 7.3 acres. The floor area ratio that would be allowed with bonuses in this district would be 4.0. They're not requesting any increase in the floor area ratio with only a .52 requested. The building height allowed is 150 feet plus an additional six for rooftop appurtenances. That includes bonuses, and that is what they are requesting. Density allowed is 50 dwelling units per acre without any bonuses, and the density proposed is 47.2, and that's for approximately 346 units over the development. The parking required and provided here is all-inclusive of the hotel and the residential units with 671 required and 763 provided. And parking has been a topic that's received a lot of attention lately, specifically related to the Museum Square development and parking in the, in the downtown area generally. So city staff and the applicant, along with area business owners, have been working closely together over the last 12 months or so, studying parking in the area and working towards a plan that provides adequate private parking as well as additional public parking to be available in the area. This slide here represents the proposed private parking that will be associated with the development. Starting with the hotel, they do have a parking master plan that was submitted with the case, requesting a reduction to a ratio of .8 per unit, which is a reduction from 1.25 per unit, and the .8 is 152 spaces required. They're proposing 178, which is 26 spaces beyond what the parking master plan says will be adequate for the development. With regard to the residential condominiums on the southern part here, there will be 430 parking spaces provided onsite, which is 37 spaces above what the code requires, and the apartment building will be, will include 155 spaces, which is 29 spaces above what the code requires. This slide summarizes, a lot of what we've heard is that the concern for parking in the area has to do with public parking, and not public parking being available and being efficient. So this slide shows some areas of city lots that we own, that we, that the city's committed to reconfiguring to provide additional public parking. So the first lot here to discuss is the Stagebrush Theater Lot. The city's committed to reconfiguring this lot to include an additional 34 public spaces in that lot. And then the Artist School Lot here will be reconfigured to include an additional seven parking spaces. In addition, there is discussion about an additional below-grade structure on the Stagebrush Lot that could potentially add another 99 spaces in that area, as well as a second below-grade level under the hotel. So the hotel will have one level for the private parking and then an additional level below that, which would include 160 public parking spaces. So in total, with these improvements, has a potential for 201 public spaces in addition to what's there currently, and that 201 is not including the potential 99 spaces if the below-grade garage was included on Stagebrush. This exhibit here is showing some additional on-street parking that's proposed to be provided. The developer has committed to and has been stipulated to provide 41 additional on-street parking spaces in addition to what is there today. These yellow areas here are identifying the areas adjacent to their development, where they will provide those additional spaces by reconfiguring existing parallel spaces to angled spaces and providing parking where parking doesn't exist currently. In addition to the 41 spaces that they'll be constructing, the city's committed to providing an additional 42 on-street parking spaces in the area of the development. So that totals 83 new on-street parking spaces compared to what's there today. So a quick overall summary, the public parking that exists today, there's approximately 82 on-street spaces, 130 spaces in the garage under the Museum of the West, there's 127 in the surface lot that's south of Second where the condominiums will be going, 56 in the Artist School parking lot, and 57 in the Stagebrush Theater surface lot. So that totals 452 parking spaces today. And then after the development with the new proposed parking, 165 on-street would be provided, 130 still in the Museum of the West garage, 160 in the Museum Square Hotel public lot level, 63 at the Artist School Lot, and 91 in the Stagebrush Theater. So that totals 609 parking spaces, which is an increase of 157 from what's out there today. And again, that doesn't include the 99 potential stalls that could be in a below-grade level at the Stagebrush Theater. So really, we'll quickly, I'll go through the criteria for the plan block development, the Planning Commission criteria. Number one is that the proposed development supports the land use elements of the general plan and downtown plan. So the general plan is mixed-use neighborhoods, the downtown plan is downtown multiple use. So the travel accommodations, restaurant, and dwelling units in a mixed-use format is consistent with those land use elements. Criteria two has to do with adding land uses to the proposal in addition to what would be allowed in the downtown district. They're not proposing any land use changes, so this is not applicable. And then the third criteria is that the proposed development reflects noteworthy investments to provide public benefits in the area. So their bonus request is only for building height. They're requesting a 72-foot bonus to achieve the 156-feet total height, including mechanical equipment. So per the ordinance requirements and formulas for special improvements, that totals to a, a special improvement requirement of 885,000, and that would be an in-lue payment into the downtown Special Improvement Trust Fund. And this amount has already been included as part of the purchase and sale agreement. However, upon close, that money will be transferred from the general fund into the Special Improvement Trust Fund, so that money will be available for the city to use on for future capital projects in the area. And really quick to touch on the abandonment case that's part of the proposal, there is a small 10-foot strip of right-of-way that is proposed to be abandoned on the south side of Second Street adjacent to the condo buildings right here. Here's a closer look at that. Like I said, it's about 10 feet, 10 feet deep and 150 feet long. This area was also included in the purchase agreement, but since this remnant piece of right-of-way was there, it is required to go through the abandonment process for the city to release that to the, to the applicant. The Development Review Board did hear the plan block development proposal September of 2018. They did recommend approval in, per the DRB criteria for the amended development standards and development plan. And a quick summary of the public outreach, the applicant held their initial open house in July of 2018, and then there was a second open house held in February of 2019. And we've also done our standard 750-foot radius mailings and other notifications. We have received a substantial amount of public comment on the case, and that's all been included in your packets under Attachment 14. And then you received the additional three correspondence that, that we received earlier today. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clough. Any questions or comments from any of the commissioners?
One question.
Commissioner Kush.
Yes, Brian, I'm not sure if you showed it. Wasn't there a restriping in Marshall Way to, to allow for a different kind of parking that picked up several spaces? I didn't notice that on any of your exhibits.
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Kush, are you talking about the area adjacent to the Artist School here?
Yes, I'm talking along the Artist School, down that street.
Okay, yes, there, there has been discussion about adding parking there. That would be part of the 42 on-street parking stalls that the city would be adding. There's, the city doesn't, doesn't control all the property in this area. We do control the Artist School, so that very likely could be a potential location for some of that public parking to be located. But we haven't nailed down all those areas yet.
Very good. Any of the other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Clough? Thank you, Mr. Clough. Now we'll get a presentation from the applicant. Wish our Kush will be right back. I don't want you to be offended by his absence. He...
Usually he waits till after I complete my presentation to leave. I've offended him then. It's good to know I've offended him before I started my presentation. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, before I start my presentation, I'd like to just take a moment to remember and honor those that lost their lives 18 years ago, and to honor and remember those first responders and men and women in our armed forces who continue to protect us, and many of whom have given the ultimate sacrifice to protect our freedom. So I just want to remember and honor those elders. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, John Berry, 6750 East Camelback Road in Scottsdale. Now, every case that you hear is important, but some cases are transformational, and Museum Square will re-energize, revitalize, and reinvigorate the arts district in Scottsdale. It includes a public-private partnership with a private sector investment of likely over $300 million. And in partnership with the Stagebrush Theater, the Scottsdale Artist School, and the Museum of the West, we are confident and hopeful that Museum Square will become the epicenter for the arts in the state of Arizona and renew and reinvigorate Scottsdale's reputation for the arts. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I know you'd prefer never to hear a lawyer speak, so I'm going to ask Jeff Denzack with Swaback Partners to come up and give you some additional detail.
Commissioners, good evening. Again, my name is Jeff Denzack. I am a partner and owner in the architectural firm Swaback, 7550 East McDonald Drive. I just want to highlight this quote here from Vern Swaback, a master-planned community masterpiece. And as you can imagine, Vern has put his heart and soul into this project and is really excited about the outcome. And one of the things Vern reminds us oftentimes as designers, he also sees our work as art. So for us, it's very fitting that this project is in the arts district, and we are so excited to move ahead on that. The other interesting thing that I want to point out is I've been with the firm for 15 years, and this is really the first time in 15 years that all five partners have come together to contribute their design input on a project, and that is really a commitment to our client, but also a commitment to the city of Scottsdale because we know how important this project is. I know you all have seen the plan, and Brian kind of gave an overview, but just a couple quick points. When Rob McDonald and Bill Borders first came to us to consider us for this project, one of the things that they were adamant about was making sure whatever we designed, it was integrated with the Artist School, with the theater, and with the Museum of the West. So for us, that was music to our ears because that really showed their commitment, and again, we think the outcome has been very, very successful. One other thing about the plan, we obviously have tall buildings, but throughout the valley we see more and more proposals with tall buildings that people oftentimes refer to them as urban. But a lot of those cases, when you look at some of these projects closely throughout the valley, even these taller buildings literally have fences that surround those properties. So for us, that really doesn't represent what we think is appropriate to the urban context. And as Brian commented on one of his slides, he showed the kind of range of connectivity throughout the property, and for us, in terms of the urban framework, we refer to that as permeable. So on this property, you can walk through it, you can walk next to it, you can get north, south, east, and west, and we think that adds to the overall quality of the setting. Within our development plan, as you know, we've got a series of key themes, and I just wanted to touch on a couple things. Number one, when we've talked about this notion of orchestrated community master plan, some people have asked us, well, what is the big idea? What's the one big idea that you're doing? And our response has always been that it's really, for us, not about one idea, but doing 1,000 things really, really well. And for us, we're excited about the direction of the design and the outcome based on that strategy. And then down at the bottom, when we talk about contextual architecture, what we've really tried to do is stray away from some of the typical things that, again, we see out throughout the valley when people introduce styles that we're all very familiar with that actually probably aren't appropriate and contextual to the Sonoran Desert. So what we've tried to do is really create what we think is authentic, appropriate architecture to Scottsdale, to the downtown, to the arts district, and to obviously the site. So we're, we're super excited about the direction. So obviously, this is a view of the site today, not very attractive, and this is what we'd like to create. On the left represents the elevation of the hotel, which again represents the kind of overall design direction for the project, the context of the materials, the colors, the composition. And on the right, again, is a tendency we're seeing more and more in the valley where we have these big glass boxes, and for us, really doesn't represent what we think is contextual design to the Sonoran Desert. One of the things that we have done is spent quite a bit of time with the Museum of the West and coordinating with them on their building, which we absolutely love. And while we certainly don't want to copy the Museum of the West, we've certainly tried to take some of the materials, some of the massing, some of the details, and complement it with our designs. And that process has included playing off some of the fun, creative, artistic features that they've done at the museum. On the right are a series of cacti that you can see in plan view, and for the hotel, we've designed a mural that's played off of that interesting geometry. Another thing that we've done is incorporated brick into the design of these buildings, which we think is very important. If we really go back and look at the history of Phoenix and Scottsdale, there've been a lot of important, especially in the downtown, brick buildings, and we want to bring that brick to the project. One of Vern's favorite quotes from Mr. Wright, "A brick is just a brick, but oh, the things that you can do with it." Also, really, if we talk about the art scene in Scottsdale, it's really started way back when with Lloyd Kiva and Charles Laloma. And interestingly enough, Charles Laloma was hopi, and in hopi, Laloma means beautiful color. So again, from an artistic standpoint, in the design of these buildings, we've been careful to incorporate really interesting aspects and design features of colored glass, which again, we think brings some wonderful context to the arts district. Another interesting thing here is in green, as Brian pointed out, this is really the limit of the property area, but one of the things that we know, and based on what John said in terms of this being transformative, is the impact of the project we think is going to go well beyond the boundaries. We think the connections to the north up Marshall Way, obviously to Main Street and all the way up to the waterfront can be wonderful, and we've also proposed to the city that there's great opportunities to make connections east all the way to Civic Center, and we've proposed to the city, and I know the city is excited about, rebranding Second Street as Proposed Museum Way. And that could be a wonderful connection to Smoka, the... And that could be a wonderful connection to Smoka, the Performing Arts Center, the Historical Museum, and obviously the Civic Center. And again, related to some of the things that Brian talked about in terms of height, one of the things that we've been very careful of with the organization of the buildings is not only the setbacks, but also the step backs. So these building masses, as you go higher, the floor plates actually get smaller. And then you go to the next level, they get smaller, and then you go to the next level, and even a smaller floor plate after that. So again, we think from an urban design standpoint, a very good practice. And then, again, in terms of the open space, we don't want to create a barrier around the property. We want it to be part of the overall urban fabric so people can move around. That plaza, what we think of as really kind of a neat urban neighborhood park with lots and lots of neat activities and opportunities for people to enjoy. And the reality is, the reason that we're able to provide all that open space, and again, Brian touched on this, the allowed gross floor area within that zone could be up to a 4.0 allowed. We're only at .49. So in a way, the developer has left a lot on the table, but again, in terms of the overall orchestrated plan, we think it has great benefits. And again, on the right, as Brian mentioned, we could go up to 50 units per acre, but we're at 47. And then finally, what we like to call our selfie shot, we can imagine in the middle of February, we might have visitors or residents standing on the lawn and having that Museum Square sign right behind them, and behind that, the beautiful hotel, and they've got their phone out and they're trying to take that picture when it's 75 degrees. And they're going to take that shot, they're going to send it to their friends in Chicago where it's probably minus 10, and they're going to say, "Wish you were here, Museum Square of the Arts District, Scottsdale." Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, a few seconds to spare. With that, we're happy to answer any questions now. I know you have many cards, or we can wait to answer questions until after public comment. Thank you.
Very good. Any comments or questions before we take public comment?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Berry. We're going to move into public comment. We'll start off with Mr. Scott Jarson. Mr. Jarson, if you could state your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Scott Jarson. My building and business is located at 3707 North Marshall Way. I wish to speak tonight because I feel passionate about this project. I feel that approval of this application is a mistake for the city of Scottsdale and its residents. Now, we've talked a lot tonight about parking, and I think some of the parking issues have been well addressed. A large portion of the parking solution, however, still falls to the city to create new parking spaces in the area, many of which encroach and destroy the walkable streetscape along Bishop Lane and Marshall Way. Marshall Way just improved last year, only to have it ripped out to create 42 spaces by the city to the benefit of this development. Now, these parking spaces look good on paper, but there's no guarantee to the community that they'll ever be delivered. All of the necessary parking for our shoppers, visitors, and area merchants should be included as part of this development project and must please make it a stipulation that allows for 24/7 public access and use. Without that, the promise to our area businesses and visitors is subject to whim, pressure from valet companies, overflow parking created by the newly apartment residences of this project, which are minimally parked. Opposition to this development is not limited just to parking issues. The scope, height, and proposed use of Museum Square is simply out of character for the Old Town Arts District. This is not approval for just a hotel. Don't forget the apartment components of this application, please. There's been a lot of discussion and references to condominiums in this application, but publicly, representatives from the developer have offered assurances that the residential buildings are expected to offer condominium ownership, but I see no stipulation in the application form to confirm this. If approved, the city might as well label this area the Apartment District, as we are already seeing competition lined up to build even more apartments in the area. Once this gets let in, the whole idea of an Arts District is dead. The height of these buildings exceed even the most reasonable approach to infill development in an area where most building heights are under 30 feet. Allowing 150-foot hotels and 90-foot apartment buildings to dominate this location is short-sighted, and it defies any reasonable concept of maintaining the flavor of a beloved destination within our city of Scottsdale. So I urge you to please fully consider the impact of this project in whole on the area to the businesses, residents, and guests that enjoy this location now. The development is so visually transformative that the impact on the entire community that enjoys the downtown Scottsdale area deserves a full understanding of what's being proposed here. So please accept the responsibility of your decision when you cast a vote tonight. I urge you to vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jarson. I think--
I have a question for you, sir.
I have a question for you.
Where do you live in relation to the project?
I own a building at 3707 Marshall Way, which is directly to the south and east of the project.
Is that the Laloma?
That's right. Laloma 5 condominiums.
Do you live there, or do you have a business there?
I have a business there, yes, thank you.
What kind of business?
Real estate sales, actually.
How many employees?
I have two full-time employees along with myself. We're Zone C2, so we're--
What kind of business is it?
Residential sales, real estate.
So you have agents that work for you?
We have independent contractors that work for us, yes.
How many?
We have 13 agents in our agency at this time.
So where, when they come to visit, where do they park?
Generally--
But I know you're building--
No, that's a good question. Rarely are they there all at one time. We typically have our office meetings. We just had one off-site in City Phoenix where there's ample parking. So we're not a location that we bring large numbers of realtors in for meetings, et cetera. It's a boutique firm.
But you're in a building that has no guest parking, if I'm not mistaken?
We have, no. We have--
No guest parking.
We have no guest parking. We use the street parking that's there now, which, much of which we cannibalized for the project.
You don't think you'd benefit if they restripped Marshall Way in front of you? With added spots, would it accommodate your people?
I think that's a really good, a really good question. I think the benefit is not really, what benefits me, I think it's what benefits the community at large. I think that the streetscape now is quite beautiful. Angled parking, which I think we know a lot of municipalities are getting away from because of safety issues, is going to eat up that streetscape. So from that standpoint, I don't support it, even if it's to my detriment.
And you do realize on the height issue, we're only adhering to what the city council passed many, many years ago when they designated this downtown?
Well--
As part of the downtown area that 150 feet was allowed?
Well, that wasn't many years ago. That was just last year, sir.
Yes, and we're only adhering to what they approved sometime back?
Yeah.
You do understand, we're not making this up tonight.
No, that's correct. But essentially, as I understand it, that's more or less spot zoning, so each application takes it on its merits. Not, it's not a given that 150 feet is an entitlement. From my understanding, I could be corrected. But I think the PAD entitlement on the property now is 65 feet, so this exceeds that by almost 90 feet.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jarson. Debbie Jarson? Ms. Jarson, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I am Debbie Jarson, and I am also at 3707 North Marshall Way, Laloma 5. I believe that Museum Square is a mistake for the city of Scottsdale and its residents. Many aspects of this plan are rushed and demand careful consideration. This is a very big change you're making. Needs that consideration by the city and our residents, such as the necessary parking for our shoppers and area merchants should be included as part of this project and must include a written stipulation that allows for 24/7 public access and use. I can tell you, I've had many times where the valet services have taken over what is supposed to be public parking. This needs to be a written stipulation. Height and use, the heights and proposed use of Museum Square are simply out of character for this Arts District. There are no real Art District-themed benefits in this application. Scottsdale might just call this the Apartment District. I think we're going to see the end of the Arts District. The developer says that residential buildings are condominiums, but nothing in writing confirms this, nothing. Most buildings in the Arts Districts are less than 30 feet, allowing 150-foot hotels? I mean, think about how many buildings that you've seen that are 150 feet. How many in Scottsdale? That's a very tall building. It's not typical. And the apartments that are around it have seemed to have grown in size. So they were once 90 feet, and now they're, I hear tonight, they're 149 feet. I'm not sure when that happened. I urge you to fully consider the impact of this project on our area businesses, our guests, and our residences. Please consider the responsibility that comes with your vote tonight, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jarson. Next speaker is Bob Pejman. Mr. Pejman, you have some time donated to you by Sunny Curtley, so you have a total of four minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Bob Pejman, owner of Pejman Gallery, located in the Scottsdale Arts District. And it's no surprise to most folks here that the Arts District merchants fought this project pretty heavily for about six, eight months, primarily on parking overflow. Having said that, we support it. I think it's a classy project, and it's a beautiful project. But parking overflow was always a main concern. And to put that in perspective, from a retailer's or a merchant's point of view, parking availability is oxygen. And I repeat that, it's oxygen. Because if we don't have parking and available and close by parking, we go out of business. And if I put any of you guys in that position, all of a sudden, it becomes real important. So for that reason, Museum Square, as it was originally proposed, posed a threat of parking cannibalization to a great extent. So we spent time, months and months, to try to convince the city and the developer to take care of this. And I'm happy to report that the city and the developer, they listened and addressed the majority of these issues. Okay, so I'm going to put a slide here, just a different spin. If we can bring that up. Can we show the whole? Well, anyway, it shows what Brian Clough already addressed, which is that it's the addition of the extra level of parking under the hotel, adding about 163 free public spaces, which are open 24/7, and they're free. The reconfiguration of the street, 41 of them are going to be done as part of the development. The 42 I've been promised and assured by staff that will get done by the city regardless of what the obstacles, all right? And also, there are two zoning stipulations, and I appreciate the help from legal to put these two stipulations in that provides, you know, designated parking for hotel employees and also for the residential. And additionally, the developer added 66 additional spaces beyond the city's code, which I, as you know, I've called deficient, but they still went above it for 66 spaces. Bottom line, about 300 additional spaces compared to day one on this project. And we're happy about that, okay? The other thing that I wanted to point out is that a lot of people think about the Arts District as a bunch of galleries, and that is not the fact. I'm going to put this list here. I don't know, for some reason, the whole thing is not shown on these, on the projector. If we can zoom out. I need more time than-- Okay. Bottom line is this, we have over 100 merchants and other entities in the Arts District. We have 46 galleries, but we also have 10 boutiques and fashion boutiques and luxury boutiques. We have 10 interior designers, many of them very prominent, but we also have 20-plus restaurants. And so we have a comprehensive range of merchants. Now, ironically, the restaurants would have been hit the hardest on the parking. And with this extra parking right now, they're going to be able to make more money. We're all going to be able to make more money, and the city will reap the extra sales tax benefit from this. And the connection between available parking and sales tax has never been brought up before. I'm going to bring it up for the first time because you look at these places, like the malls that have a lot of parking, the restaurants and businesses do well, and the tax rate, and the taxes are generated. And finally, I would say that I hope that the other developers that are doing the large projects learn from this, and just because the parking code is to the bare minimum, that doesn't mean that they have to adhere to it and they cannot go above it. If they want a quality product, like Museum Square is going to be, they can do the same thing and add more parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pejman.
Question.
Commissioner Kush does have a question for you, Mr. Pejman.
One quick question, Mr. Pejman. How long have you been a gallery owner?
Here, about 10 years.
How long?
10 years.
So you consider yourself a good speaker on the Arts District?
Yes.
Do you feel this project will, someone said it's going to lead to the end of the Arts District? Do you believe that?
Depends on what happens, you know? If--
As designed and as built with the parking, is it going to lead to the end of the--
If it's only as is, no. But there's more coming. The Bishop's--
Right. I'm just asking about this project. We're only voting on that.
The one project won't, but the people that make that statement are making it on the basis that there's more to happen that will cause, you know, every one of these buildings or the art galleries are in are a target to be, you know, to be redeveloped.
All right, I just was curious about that. We're only voting on this project.
No, on this one alone, I don't think it's a threat, no.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Our next speaker is Gabrielle Klobuchar? Good enough. Thank you, I appreciate that. If you could state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, I am Gabrielle Klobuchar, and I live at 7501 East McDowell Road in Scottsdale. Today, I am speaking on behalf of Honor Health. Dear Council, as the largest employer in the city of Scottsdale and a property owner in Old Town Scottsdale, Honor Health would like to add our support for the Museum Square development project. Our Osborne Medical Center campus is approximately 700 feet away from the proposed Museum Square. We recognize this project will bring much-needed activity to a currently underutilized land parcel adjacent to the wonderful Museum of the West. Museum Square's proposed open space will be a major amenity for residents, visitors, and employees alike. Ensuring the vibrancy of Scottsdale's downtown area with projects like Museum Square is an important part of keeping our Scottsdale an attractive place for our employees to live, work, and play. Maintaining a quality workforce is vital for Honor Health's continued success in bringing exceptional healthcare services to the city's residents and visitors. We urge you support this important project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker--
I am also speaking on behalf of the Scottsdale Firefighter Association. Over the years, the city council has maintained a strong dedication to providing essential resources to its community and residents. We commend you for the actions you have taken to improve the city of Scottsdale. In order to meet the needs of Scottsdale for public safety parks, roads, community programs, and quality of life measures, Scottsdale is widely considering the disposal of property. Thanks to the sale of unused land, approximately 27 million could be generated to help meet these challenges. Events are a crucial component of Scottsdale's overall time, overall image. The city and its residents often benefit from events held in Scottsdale through increased cultural opportunities, recreational activities, increased economic activity, and enhanced community status. In recent years, downtown Scottsdale has lost a substantial amount of area that was used to hold large-scale events, forcing Scottsdale to lose a significant amount of exposure and business. As part of its open space plan, Museum Square will provide a new public space event that will help attract audiences and increase tourism in Scottsdale. We are excited for the potential Museum Square offers and commend the Scottsdale City Council for its inventive public-private approach. I encourage you to proceed with McDonald Development as a way to provide potential new revenues that will help support the needs of local programs, including those for public safety. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Schenkott. Did I say it right? If you could state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes. If you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Sandy Schenkot, 10961 East Gary Road. Good evening, Commissioners. As a supporter of the Museum of the West and the Scottsdale Arts District, I would like to lend my support for the Museum Square development. I was told by Mrs. Jim Bruner, Sandy Bruner, that Mr. McDonald, the developer, visited Scottsdale's Museum of the West, and after that visit, he was so impressed that he came up with this idea of building a hotel and condos in the area to help stimulate business in the area and to bring more patrons to the Arts District and the Scottsdale Museum of the West. I was published in the Scottsdale Progress on 8/11/19, and the title of my article was "Museum Square Will Stimulate the Arts District." For more than 10 years, I have supported the Arts District in many different ways. And during the last two years, I was hired to be the liaison to the concierge organizations in the valley to promote the Arts District, so they in turn would send their hotel guests to Main Street and Marshall Way galleries and businesses. The Arizona Hotel is going to be 150 feet, which is part of Museum Square. There has been much dissension by many naysayers in the city about the height of the hotel. The citizens who are complaining obviously do not understand that the City Council made this decision more than a year ago to allow 150 feet. And there's what, seven more buildings coming out at this height? So, all of those in opposition of the Museum Square because of the height might be wise to save their negative energy and just move on. This developer now has worked with the gallery owners and merchants, as Pejman just said, to accommodate more parking, so I would suggest that you all vote yes for Museum Square. And I just looked at my phone, and the Phoenix Business Journal announced this project in their publication earlier today. So, we're getting a lot of excitement about this, and I look forward to this building getting off the ground real soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schenkot. Next speaker is Don Henninger. If you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to speak.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Don Henninger, 8202 East Dell Camino Drive. I'm also founder and director of the Scottsdale Coalition of Today and Tomorrow. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of support of the Museum Square project. Successful organizations, cities especially, must constantly reinvent themselves, evolve, and grow. And we're seeing the need for that today in the core of our city. Old Town has much charm and appeal still, but time is catching up. It needs new life, new attractions, and new people. Museum Square provides this. It will bring people, local and visitors alike, new customers, who will experience the charm of Old Town, all that its merchants have to offer, ultimately revenue. It's one of the pieces of the puzzle that will give Old Town some exciting and sustainable future that will last for generations to come. Projects of this scope and magnitude come with challenges, and the developer has worked with the city and private sector alike to come up with some solutions. They've listened to the concerns about parking. They've responded with an agreement that adds hundreds of parking spaces to their development that will handle not only their needs, but also provide parking relief for the Arts District and up to Main Street. They know that Scottsdale is special and deserving of world-class design, and they've responded, working with Swabuck Architects, to create a design that is worthy of Scottsdale and is one that we all can be proud of. Anytime the Swabuck Architectures get their hands on a project, you know it's gonna be something of high quality. And it comes from a developer with a proven track record, one with the resources and the know-how to get the job done the right way. Projects like these don't come around very often. This is one the city, I think, can't afford to pass up. It's one that can help ensure a strong future for our arts community and its reputation, a foundation that can be a spark plug that helps connect the Museum of the West to the Civic Center, Scottsdale Arts, and all the points in between. I urge you to approve this and send it on to City Council. Thanks for your consideration and your service to our city.
Thank you, Mr. Henninger. Our next speaker is Janet Martin. Ms. Martin, if you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to speak.
Janet Martin, 8685 East Bellevue Place in Scottsdale. And I'm not a businessperson, I'm just a person who loves Scottsdale. I've lived here 30 years. I'm somewhat nervous. I love to go to Old Town, and I appreciate what it is. And I feel like a building that's 150 feet tall is just too big. And I believe it was the developer that mentioned that we're seeing this more and more, but just because it's more and more doesn't make it right in my eyes. Just, I just think it's too big. And I would, I would ask you to vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Our next speaker is Mike Fox. Mr. Fox, if you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
I'm Michael J. Fox, the other one. And the address is 3830 North Marshall Way. And good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for your public service. I am director of Scottsdale's Museum of the West, one of the most recent new public destinations in our wonderful community. And I'm here on behalf of our Board of Directors and our staff and our hundreds of volunteers and our thousands of supporters and members to very enthusiastically support Museum Square. Thanks to the vision and support of the city's leadership, in just less than five years, short years, Scottsdale's Museum of the West has become a signature destination for thousands of visitors, a significant addition to Scottsdale's portfolio of one-of-a-kind tourism attractions, a recognized Smithsonian affiliate, as well as the best western museum in the country, as noted by national media, and a major compliment to our city's coveted reputation as a national leader in the arts and culture. We have an inevitable reputation to build upon. There is no other museum director in our country now who has been privileged to help more museums and the arts become the focal point within their neighborhoods and communities than what has been my privileged 50-year career as a cultural developer. I know firsthand the significant benefits to museums and the arts and the mercantile community to have mixed use in their midst. It really works to integrate the life way of the individuals visiting or the people living in our neighborhoods with the community of culture and the arts. Because of the vision of Museum Square's internationally respected and admired developer, along with the team of creative and sensitive and thoughtful professionals he assembled for this project, it is seen that our city-owned museum and our neighboring art galleries and other related art dimensions will become the hub of our planned, reinvigorated neighborhood of Museum Square. For Scottsdale Museum of the West, this is the attraction of the project, as it aligns with the vision and mission of the museum, to boldly, creatively, and personally immerse our residents and our visitors in the unique story of this American West, illuminating the past to shape the future. Every day, with tourists lodging and residents living in the immediate walking distance to the museum in our historic Arts District, we will have the opportunity few other museums anywhere in our country have to intimately and creatively engage both residents and tourists in self-discovery, find themselves in the West. Both within the museum and with its changing exhibits and related programs and within the Museum Square Hotel and residential complexes, our award-winning museum will be offering similar, both hands-on experiences and the Western spirit, bringing a whole new perspective of the West right to them in some beautiful, dynamic, and dramatic features. Not long after the turn of this past century, Scottsdale was beginning to earn recognition as the center for art, civic heritage, community celebrations, and cultural tourism. Museum Square will be embracing, creating, and celebrating this unique sense of place in our historic downtown. This once-in-a-community's-lifetime major development project introduces and stimulates both visitors and residents with the great themes of Western culture: integrity, optimism, perseverance, courage, and creativity.
Mr. Fox, your time's expired. If you could take just a couple moments to...
Certainly. I urge you, please, to support this art-driven, life-impacting development project that, in so many unique and creative ways, will celebrate the region's past, present, and its future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
You bet.
Our next speaker will be French Thompson, followed by Noel Krugman.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. I thank you for what you do. My name's French Thompson. I'm the president of the Scottsdale Gallery Association. My business is 7148 East Main Street. I just recently had a trip up to Portland, and they have a great deal of residential buildings that are fairly new up in the Pearl District. I see that's what's gonna happen to downtown Scottsdale, that it's gonna be a great deal of residential businesses down there. Our lifeline really is a lot of people that don't live here that we do business with, very little of our businesses locals. Locals don't seem to like to buy things in their own backyard. They like to go to Santa Fe, Chicago. I will say this: While I was walking around, there were an awful lot of restaurants up there, a lot of hair salons, a lot of workout places. I didn't see any galleries. Now, I'm just gonna tell you what: I'm taking away my opposition against Museum Square. I'm willing to agree to disagree with Rob McDonald when he says that the project has plenty of parking. I'm gonna disagree. If they change the parking to double what they originally said they were gonna have, I don't think it'd be enough. I really don't, you know? But, on the other hand, I think this is probably the nicest project that could ever be put on that piece of land and that property. All the other projects that I've seen really don't come up to the standard of this. I would like to see this there rather than something else. I would rather have a whole lot more parking in there than, than what's being provided. They've worked with us. We've had many conversations. The parking situation, I think, is, it's still gonna hurt us. But I never expected them to double the amount of parking in the first place. I never, all I wanted to do is try to lessen the negative impact. I think everybody that lives in those buildings is gonna have a car. Every single one of those people living in any of the apartments that are coming down there, they're gonna have cars. Maybe 20 or 30 years in the future, people will have less cars and they'll be walking around. The Pearl District is a big walking area, but they have a trolley that's built in where the rails are in the street so that they can drive cars where it is without light rail taking up all the stuff. Lots of people walking around there, lots of parking garages for those people. They do business around there, great restaurants. Again, I just don't see any art galleries down there. So, I'm really afraid the Arts District is gonna go away. But I think that's the future, you know? That's what I see in the future. I think Rob McDonald would really like to see the Arts District stay there and be a really good, active part of the neighborhood. I'm for this project. I just, I don't think we're gonna have the Arts District anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Right.
Noel Krugman, followed by Kristi Krugman. If you could state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Noel Krugman, 21250 North 36th Place. Good afternoon, Chairman, Alessio, and Commissioners. My first show in Arizona was at Grease Paint. It was four years ago, and it was Beauty and the Beast. Since I was new, I was nervous I wouldn't be able to make friends. That was one of the, my most favorite experiences of all time. Right from the start, everyone was so kind to me, and they were all incredibly talented. Thanks to the actors and staff, I felt like Grease Paint was my home. Ever since then, I've always loved Grease Paint, and I've been privileged to be in a few of their shows. Grease Paint has made a difference in my life and my love for theater. It always makes me happy and it gives me, and it gives hope to those who need it. Grease Paint has, oh, made a difference in my life and my love for theater. I really hope Grease Paint continues to be where it's at, not only for me, but for other kids around the community who share a passion for theater and entertainment. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Krugman, followed by Kristen Erter, Erter her. If you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Okay. Kristi Krugman, 21250 North 36th Place. Chairman Alessio and Commissioners, we are in favor of Museum Square. Our family feels so blessed to be a part of the Grease Paint community, and we believe Scottsdale is fortunate to have this artistic gem. We are especially thankful to Maureen Watson Diaz. When we moved here from California, we wanted our daughter, Noel, to continue to be involved in musical theater. Grease Paint provided her a perfect opportunity and environment as she was cast in a show at age eight. Now, 13, Noel has grown so much and has made beautiful, lasting friendships through the performing arts. Theater is a vital, theater is vital to our community in that it celebrates diversity and strengthens character while inspiring and entertaining all of us. Confidence, creativity, and responsibility are among the important values nurtured within the Grease Paint family. Preserving this cherished asset in Scottsdale will continue to make this community great. As Grease Paint has embraced and enriched our family, we urge you to keep and improve the Stagebrush Theater as part of Museum Square for future generations. We are in favor of Museum Square as it will create energy flow in the area, keep businesses buzzing, and the city thriving. Residents and visitors love Scottsdale for all it has to offer. Let's keep it that way and make it even better. Vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kristen Erter. Am I saying that correctly?
Erter.
Erter. Kristen Erter, followed by Maureen Watson. If you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes. Hello, I'm Kristen Erter. I live at 7829 East Santa Catalina Drive in Scottsdale. I have raised three boys in Scottsdale. My youngest will turn 18 in 10 days, so I feel like I'm gonna be forced into retirement soon. If I had to pick one reason or one thing about Scottsdale that has made the most positive impact on my son's life, so it would be Grease Paint Youth Theater. During their challenging and sometimes painful adolescent years, they found their community and their tribe at the Stagebrush, within the walls of Stagebrush, which is at Goldwater and Second, for those of you who don't know. It provides, Grease Paint Youth Theater provides youth from all over the valley the opportunity to be part of a supportive group of caring, talented, professional artists who are able to create extremely high-quality live theater. We live up in the Pinnacle Peak area of Scottsdale, yet we've commuted to Second and Goldwater for seven years. It's a 30-minute drive from my house. I am not alone at all. We have families that come from Anthem, Fountain Hills, Chandler Mesa, Peoria, all over the valley, to be part of Grease Paint. I highly doubt my family unfortunately would venture further than Fashion Square if Grease Paint wasn't there. We have, we all eat, we drink, we shop, we even sleep sometimes. We do staycations down when we're having shows. So, I am here in support of the Museum Square project because places such as Stagebrush and the Artist School are included in its plan. It will bring support necessary to improve both of these priceless Scottsdale institutions where art and artists are created and important stories are told, all while attracting more families to this part of Scottsdale. And I, seeing the plans tonight, I think it's a beautiful project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maureen Watson, followed by Bill Crawford. Ms. Watson, if you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Maureen Watson. My address is 8219 East Northland Drive, Scottsdale.
My address is 8219 East Northland Drive, Scottsdale. I apologize for my address. I'll be going back to work shortly after this. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing all of us on the Museum Square project. A couple of things that struck me: I have worked in Scottsdale for about 15 years now. I've lived in South Scottsdale for about the last seven. Growth is inevitable. Development is inevitable. And height to create that new development is inevitable. I know that folks are very upset about the height changes, but it's happening everywhere. And to be honest, Scottsdale can't go any further out. We're going to have to grow up. And this project, the design is beautiful, and I think revitalization where Grease Paint sits, I'm the artistic director at Grease Paint, by the way, but revitalization down there is needed. It's a, I've been watching these projects come around since about 2003 for the La Loma parcel, and not a single one of them ever took into consideration what was around them. Not only did Rob McDonald come and meet with Stagebrush, and of course, the Museum of the West, all of the gallery owners, the Scottsdale Artist School, but I truly believe he wants to build there because it is the Arts District. He has a track record and a history of supporting arts where he lives, and I think he wants to do the same thing there. I believe in this project. I think it will be an incredible boon, not just to Stagebrush Theater, the Artist School, the museum, but to the entire city itself, all the way over here to Scottsdale Arts, the mall, I mean, everything. And it's beautifully designed by Suavek. I don't think anything better could be put on that parcel of land than what is planned right now. Stagebrush Theater is a little theater, but we employ about 40 artists every year in a city that does not, or has not historically, and not just Scottsdale, but all over the valley, supported employment of artists. That's no small thing. We have also, each year, we touch about 800 children, many of which are on Broadway now, are in major motion pictures, are on television, national tours. We also bring in 8,000 to 10,000 visitors to Grease Paint as audience members who, again, shop here, eat here, drink here, sometimes rent condos downtown so they don't have to drive home. We have a vested interest in this, absolutely, and I personally do. It's my livelihood. But I've looked at this project, and I've looked at all the past projects, and there is no comparison. Museum Square is gorgeous, and it's perfect for what we need downtown. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. The next speaker is Bill Crawford, followed by Savannah Thompson.
Greetings, Commissioner and Commissioners. My name is Bill Crawford. I live at 4601 North 73rd Street in Scottsdale. I've lived downtown for over 20 years, and I've had a business in downtown for over 20 years that has a lot of outreach with both the business owners and the residents in Scottsdale. And I've been pretty involved in the community for quite some time. I guess that this must be an exciting time to be, to be a planner and see a project like this come forward that is pivotable, pivotal, and will change the future of downtown Scottsdale. One of the things that I've seen over the years is the failure of one business after another after another, a restaurant and sometimes galleries. And when I first came here, downtown Scottsdale was the Mecca of all the shops, the vitality, the restaurants, the galleries. And then we had other developments further north, Carolyn Commons, Scottsdale Corridor, and it took away some of that traffic. It took away some of those businesses. So a lot of studies have been done over the years as to what we need to do to fix downtown Scottsdale. Well, we need density, we need residential, we need hotels, we need Class A office space, we need open space. This project delivers all of these things. And I just think that it's a very exciting project, it's a very exciting time, and I think that we should be embracing this. Museum Square is such a complex development, and it brings resolutions to a complex list of needs, both present and future. And that's really the main thing, is what it does for our future, because we have to prepare for our future. You know, we've enjoyed Scottsdale the way it is. It's not going to stay the way it is. It's going to change for the future. We're fortunate to have a developer who has the sophistication to conceive of such a project and that he can put all the components together to make it work, including the lead architectural firm, and what a magnificent job that they've done. The height issue that we keep hearing about, this was started a long time ago by a different administration. It started with Amwest for 150 feet. We had the waterfront development for 150 feet. Recently, Mace Rich, we had another downtown project that was recently approved. And the hospital was approved for 150 feet a long time ago. So this isn't anything that should take us by surprise, shouldn't be a shock. There's also some things that have been presented where there's an argument that the city should hold on to this, that they might find a better development later on, they might be able to do a better job with it. And I just want to point out to you that they had that opportunity, okay? Many years ago, they created the La Loma Bus Station. Anybody remember that? It was a catastrophe. It was a failure. Not only did it have limited hours of operation where you couldn't get in to buy tickets for your kids and stuff like that. I went down there one time to buy tickets, and I pulled out my wallet and pulled out a credit card, and I was confronted with this: Cash only. Seriously? A municipal bus station that was trying to be successful wouldn't take plastic money? So that's, that's what we've had in the past. This project completely diametrically opposes everything that's been down there before, everything that has been proposed before. And that cash-only sign is somewhat prophetic. Why? Because that's cash. It's cash only. These guys aren't borrowing money from the city. They're not asking for special favors. They're bringing in cash only. $300 million, and that will greatly change our downtown Scottsdale, our Arts District, and that whole part of town. Thank you, and I hope that you support this project.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next speaker is Savannah Thompson, followed by Jay Danik.
Hi, I'm Savannah Thompson, and I'm an employee at SCP Grease Paint at Stagebrush Theater, located at 7020 East Second Street. I've lived in Scottsdale for nearly my entire life, and I'm a supporter of the Museum Square. Discovering Grease Paint in high school changed my life, and I don't say that lightly. It's not just a place where I did theater, it's a place where I built lifelong friendships and developed a self-confidence I never knew before, where I found my true passion and where I was exposed to interesting careers that I hadn't even known existed. If it wasn't for Grease Paint, I probably wouldn't have gone to school to study arts administration or theater, or even known that that was a possibility for people like me who are interested in things like that. And I'm willing to bet that I wouldn't have a job now where the work I do every single day is as rewarding, fulfilling, and life-changing as it is, especially straight out of college. And I most likely probably wouldn't have stayed in Scottsdale long after graduation either. But the Stagebrush Theater has truly become my home away from home in so many ways, just like it has for kids all over the valley who come from everywhere to come do shows and see shows at Grease Paint. And I firmly believe that the Museum Square will bring a vibrancy to the Arts District that will increase activity, bring more attention to all the businesses and venues in the area, which will help ensure that they not only survive but thrive and keep us where we are, continuing to give kids and their parents opportunities to discover their homes and their passions right here in Scottsdale, just like I did. And that's why I support Museum Square, and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jay Danik, followed, and that will be Paul Ng. Hopefully, I'm saying these names right. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Jay Danik, 9079 East Winderos Drive, Scottsdale, Arizona. I have been a resident of Scottsdale for 19 years. I'd like to pledge my support tonight for the Museum Square. This development is the first that I've seen come along in a long time. That's a way to boost the economic impact of the Arts District. I've seen a lot of places in that area come and go over the years, whether it be restaurants, shops, bars, and it seems like we're starting to lose our tourist impact on the area. The theater, to me, is a whole, a whole different area. I kind of got involved into theater seven years ago when my daughter became a, became big on theater. At the time, I will say, I was not very happy with that. Theater was, I didn't know anything about it, but then she started to go there and gain the confidence of friends around her and the people. And I could see, not just in her eyes, but everyone up there, the way they shine on stage, the way they interact with people, the way they are with others. My fear is if we don't do something in the Arts District, we're going to lose that for 800 additional kids that come to Grease Paint or other places around there very soon. This project is providing really everything you guys need to do that, to keep the Arts District alive: additional parking, new gathering areas, grass fields, places where people want to go. We know the young and people that are kind of moving into these downtown districts, they want something new and exciting. Without something new and exciting, they're, they're going to leave, and they're going to go somewhere else. And as someone else had spoken, you know, Carolyn, Scottsdale Corridor, I kind of live up in that district, and yeah, people don't, a lot of people don't know of the Arts District. But providing something new down here will bring in a whole new clientele. It's been proven that visitors are drawn to new and exciting areas, and I think just the reemergence will bring in a whole new clientele. The museum is going to provide a revitalization to an area that is in desperate need of some change. So tonight, I urge you to vote yes on this project, this town, so it can be part of the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danik. Next speaker is Paul Ng.
Ng.
Ng. Close. Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record. And next speaker after that will be Dale Nakagawa.
My name is Paul Ng. I live at 7033 East Main Street. I probably have the best view of downtown that anybody does, and the best feel for downtown that anybody does. And I also want to say, I'm all in favor of this development. I've been around Scottsdale on and off for a long, long time, back in the day when we had, the best steak was Joe Hunt Steakhouse. Fifth Avenue had a fabulous Polynesian restaurant. Doc Cavallari was still over there banging out horseshoes. And American Legion was right across the street from the police station, and Chief Nemitz would come over every evening for a beer. I was very fortunate, he never asked me how old I was. And those old guys used to take me out on a Saturday night after we closed down the American Legion, and we'd go out to Riaada Pass. I'd have to spend the night out there because that's how far away it was. And now, it's just a short drive. I've seen Scottsdale grow. I've loved every minute of it. My home in Arcadia was the old Hurd Museum Show Home. It is now a 120-year-old adobe. Imagine my surprise when I was overseas and I come home and my wife bought a condominium on Main Street. I go from an acre to 1,800 square feet cement with two little dogs, and I have to walk them down here to find grass. That's where I met Mayor Layton. He used to always admonish me, make sure I pick up the dog droppings. And I always told him, hey, I'll do that as long as you make sure you take care of the council people, too. I'm only teasing. I like the project. I am concerned about one thing, though. It's not the height, it's how we get around that height exclusion. My understanding is there is a deed restriction which belongs to the HOA of Main Street Plaza, of which I am a member. I remember years ago, city council decided they wanted to keep baseball here, and they wanted to build a new stadium, and they were going to take the old golf course over here on Osborne and build something for the baseball team. That's when they found out there was a deed restriction. That land had been donated to the city, and the restriction was it would always be a golf course. Well, I live in a property, I'm a part of an HOA, and it says there's a height restriction. How do you get rid of the height restriction? I lived there, I've never been to a meeting, I've never been to, nobody's ever asked me if I approve of it, releasing the height restriction, and I don't have a problem with it. The only problem I had was when it was brought to my attention that that height restriction removal value was about $800,000. And I'm thinking, well, I'm not a greedy person, but it's the HOA property. If it's going to be, if somebody's going to pay $800,000 for a, to remove a height restriction, that should go to the HOA. Indirectly, it's mine, my undivided ownership of it. And so that's why I'm here. I'm looking for the answers to, how did that happen? Mr. McDonald, how did you get that deed restriction removed? I'd like to know. Was it done legally? If it's done legally, please share it with me, because then I'll go home and I'll be satisfied. But if my HOA directors, who are supposed to be fiduciaries, have done something that, given away something that I'm not aware of or I'm not privy to, then I want to know. And that's all I have. But otherwise, yes, I approve of the project. I love downtown. I'll probably die down there, and hopefully, I'll see this built before I die.
Very good.
And by the way, don't let my looks fool you, I'm in the fourth quarter of my life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Dale Nakagawa.
Nakagawa.
Nakagawa, that's close. Not really, but. And our next speaker after that will be Myram and Anna Scales.
Hello, my name is Dale Nakagawa. My address is 7003 North 14th Avenue in Phoenix, but I work quite a bit with the Stagebrush Theater and Grease Paint Youth Theater here in Scottsdale. And in my nine or so years of working with the theater, not only have I seen the positive impact theater has had on hundreds of children and their families, in that same time, we've seen a lot of different proposals for development of this property come through. And this proposal is the first one to take into account the existing tenants of the property, the existing Arts District that's already there. It's also the first one to have taken the time to sit down and talk with the people who live and work here and adapt their plan to the people here. And not only did they talk and listen, but then they took that advice and implemented it. And the proposal that we have now is, is a fantastic opportunity to revitalize an area of the city that has been slowly stagnating. And if I can find someplace a little better to park when spring training is happening, I'd appreciate that, too. So I just, please support the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Myram and Anna Scales. This will be followed by Teresa Swangler. If you could state your names and address for the record, and you'll have a total of three minutes.
Okay. Myriam and Anna Scales. We live in 8542 North Inverland Lane Drive. We are neighbors. And Anna is a little bit, she is supposed to speak, but she's a little overwhelmed. Do you want to? No? Because it's government. Okay. So just really quick, we, we are here, and we are in favor of the project, and I'm just going to tell you very candid, candid, our story. We, a few months ago, a friend of mine told me, why don't you go to see the show at Grease Paint? And all-town, like, all-town theater? So we went. We were shocked of the amazing quality of those shows. So when we were driving home, Anna said, mommy, this is amazing. That theater is magic and is close to, from our house. We don't have to drive all the way to ASU. We don't have to drive to Peoria. It's right here, close to us. And I said, okay. And she said, well, do they teach classes? So we enrolled her in classes at Grease Paint instead of us having to drive to downtown to enroll her in classes. So what happened? She fell in love. She fell in love. And what happened, that meanwhile, she's in classes, my husband and I are discovering Old Town, because we're waiting for her. Um, we moved here 10 years ago, like I said, and to be really, really honest, we loved Old Town, but after a while, you stop coming, because it's just stays there, I mean, everything's the same, and, um, so now Anna is participating in a show. She is, uh, she auditioned, she, this is her happiest, her grades in the school are going up every week, she's doing amazing, because the show and everything is, is a motivation, is exciting. Now, I'm telling other moms and other families about Grease Paint, and quite frankly, they say, Grease Paint in Old Town? Yes, and there is a fabulous museum, Museum of the West. What? These are families who live here, and they don't, they don't know, because they're going to other places that seem a little bit more dynamic. And we have everything here, and I think this project is fantastic, and it'll be great, great. Uh, I can tell you right now, um, you should go to see the, the show, by the way, Frozen, it's in October, bring families and friends, but spread the word, because there's so much here, that's what we're doing. We're having people actually coming, not kidding you, from San Francisco, from Puerto Vallarta, and from New Mexico, and they're gonna go, get to stay in Old Town, because they're gonna go to see the show, why not? So, um, that's, that's what I want to tell you, fabulous project, hopefully it can be supported. And I understand for some people, it's like, okay, it doesn't, it doesn't look nice, you know what? We need to like, bring new energy, get those families in Scottsdale to come down here, because that's what they want, that's what they're waiting for. They just want somebody to tell them, here, this is new, look at this, look at that, we're gonna have a lot of more visitors in Old Town. You have to say. Why do you like Grease Paint?
Um, because it's really fun and I enjoy it, and they're really nice to me. Everyone, yeah.
Okay? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker is Teresa Swangler, followed by Mary Turner.
Hi, I'm Teresa Swangler, 3731 East Maffeo Road, and I'm here as a strong supporter of the Museum Square project. By day, I'm a Director of Design, where I lead a group of designers on the future of light, and by night, I'm a theater mom. I bring my children to Stagebrush Theater almost every night, and they have grown infinitely over the past several years, um, as part of this theater. I believe that this Museum Square is a thoughtful approach to development that integrates with the surrounding arts community, the Museum of the West, Scottsdale Artist School, and Stagebrush Theater, um, which is extremely important to my family. I think when we think about the future and about change, it's often very difficult, because we can only see what we can imagine currently. But if we reimagine a new arts district, I believe Museum Square is central to that reimagined new arts district, and is, um, absolutely vital for its reinvigoration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mary Turner, and then followed by our final speaker, which is Laura Reynoso.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Mary Turner, I live at 5131 North Granite Reef Road, and I'm here on behalf of the Police Officers of Scottsdale Association and Legacy Gallery. Uh, they weren't able to attend tonight, but would like me to read both of their letters into record tonight. On behalf of the Police Officers of Scottsdale Association, we are writing to voice our support for the proposed Museum Square development project in the southern part of Old Town. In order to help meet the needs of citizens and visitors, Scottsdale is considering the sale of city property that used to be a bus station. It's now sits dormant and generates no fiscal benefit for the city. But thanks to the sale of this unused land, approximately 27 million could be generated to help meet city needs, along with new annual tax revenue. We are excited for the potential of Museum Square. We encourage you to improve, approve Museum Square for the exciting potential and benefits it offers to our city. Police Officers of Scottsdale. And second is Legacy Gallery. Scottsdale has a million-dollar reputation for its continued commitment to the art galleries. We have been proud to be a major gallery in the United States, and located in Scottsdale for the past 30 years, on the corner of Main Street and Scottsdale Road. Our other business, Scottsdale Art Auction, is responsible for bringing a hundred or thousands of people to the downtown area for the past 14 years. We wanted to let you know that we are excited for the potential development of Museum Square. It will help anchor the downtown's art signature, Main Street. Over the years, we have watched the downtown area go through a series of changes. While we have enjoyed the downtown nightlife, this isn't necessarily our customer. The development of a Museum Square and the upscale environment with new upscale hotels and possible, possibly a couple more restaurants is what helps us most. We produce three events a year where hundreds of our clients fly here from art, for our special shows and our art auction. And better downtown hotels are extremely needed. I have to send them to the Phoenician, Royal Palms in Phoenix, and Paradise Valley Hotels, which means that Scottsdale is not making the sales tax dollars. For us, this project seems like a no-brainer. We are excited for the potential of Museum Square and applaud the city council and city staff for its innovative approach to hopefully make it happen. We encourage you to proceed with Museum Square for the exciting potential it offers us. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Uh, our final speaker is Laura Reynoso. If you could state your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes.
Um, I'm Laura Reynoso, 3737 East Robin Lane, and I am here as a supporter of the Museum Square. I am originally a supporter of the Grease Paint Youth Theater, but looking more and more into this development, um, and really thinking about what it brings and how beautiful it is, I am even more on board than I was when I started looking into it about six months ago. Um, in 1991, I came to Scottsdale as a tourist with my mom, I was in high school, and said, hey, I don't think I can go to college in the snow, came and moved to Arizona, and fell in love with a third-generation Arizonan. So my children are actually fourth-generation Arizonans, which is a very interesting thing to be. My support for this project starts with the fact that it's going to bring so much increased activity to this area. I remember in the 90s, coming and visiting these beautiful shops and museums and walking around, and then as I got married and got older and moved up into North Scottsdale, I didn't really come down here so much until I had children who stumbled upon Grease Paint and had the most extraordinary experience three years ago, and we haven't left. Um, I have two very different children, one being more of an athlete and a fly-by-the-seat-of-her-pants kind of person, and the second child is a singer, but more of a leadership person. And this was a place where I could take two children with very different personalities, and both of them would have challenging, incredible experiences. I am so happy they get to sing and dance and do musicals, but what I love more, and why I am wholly committed to them continuing in theater, is the challenges that they get and what they overcome by having these challenges. And this is a very different thing than most children are exposed to nowadays. There's not a lot of places where kids really get to grow exponentially by solving problems, being part of a team, adhering to a strict schedule, rehearsing, and coming together as a crew to learn and grow. So my support is for the theater, my support is for this beautiful transformational project that has got amazing potential to bring so many more people back down and renew this vibrancy for this area of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynoso. Rain, do we have any additional speakers, or is that it? All right, then we'll go ahead and close public testimony. Mr. Berry, do you have any final comments?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, yes, I do. I just want to, I'm overwhelmed by the support. Thank you all very much, and I know both those in opposition, the Jarsons, and another woman who spoke in support, they're speak from passionate and, um, good faith perspectives on their concerns regarding the project, but I also want to thank all of you who took the time to come down and support it. Thank you very much. One thing I do want to talk about is height, and I think it was pointed out that a year or so ago, the city council, after substantial amounts of public involvement and notice and input, decided to designate certain areas of the town that would be appropriate for additional height. And that, of course, is not taken lightly either by the professional planning staff, the citizens who are involved, the commissioners themselves who were, uh, voted on that as well, and the city council members. I would note that that decision to increase height in various parts of the cities was a unanimous recommendation from the city, uh, from the planning commission at the time, and a unanimous vote by the city council at that time. But one of the interesting things that they did as part of that is the policy in Scottsdale has been, as one speaker said, there's not a right to have additional height. Just because the plan says it, it's not a right. Scottsdale says, you know, this is about quality, it's not about quantity, it's, it's about the quality of the architecture, the quality of the urban experience, how are we treating our neighbors, how are we treating the pedestrian, the tourist? That's what this is about, protecting our brand, which keeps our taxes low through tourism. In this instance, you have to earn additional height in Scottsdale. It's not a right, you have to earn it, and not just write a check to the city for community benefits, it has to be more. So does this project live up to Scottsdale's unique perspective of earning the right to additional height? Let me run through it very quickly. I think we do, but it's not my decision, it's yours and the city councils. This is a partial list of some of the community benefits. Energize and revitalize the arts district, we've talked about that. Leverage the taxpayer investment in these great institutions. The city owns the property underneath these, the taxpayers have made substantial contributions and investments in these very important and quality cultural institutions. We get to leverage that investment by creating two plus two equal five, six, or seven. 1% for the arts, that's three to four million dollars in public art that will be included in this, in this property. The amount of open space, one of the things with height is instead of taking 60 or 65-foot tall buildings and squishing them down on the site, what do you do? It's like the waterfront, huge amounts of open space that are used by the community along the canal. You take that same square footage and stack it on top of each other, what happens? More open space, more view corridors. And in this instance, as Jeff Denzack talked about, this open space is accessible to the public. We're not walling people out, it's accessible to the public. It's not an amenity just for the people who can afford the 7, 8, $900,000 a square foot condos in here, it's for the public and the tourists who visit us. The Museum Square Plaza, lots of discussions in the community about the Emerald Necklace, obviously a reference to Boston, um, but it, it's a great gathering place for residents and tourists. I think, I love this selfie central. It will become selfie central, and it'll have significant art installations here. There's about $27 million in proceeds that the city will get from the sale of this property that will be used in the arts district and in Old Town. There will be new public parking, there will be uniquely Scottsdale architecture. Thank you, Swabak, for, for providing that for us. What about tourism, which helps keep our taxes low? Four-star luxury hotels, 70,000-room nights a year. Can you imagine a four-star hotel with 70,000-room nights? One, two people in that room? What are they doing? They're going up and down the elevators in a very cool hotel, Instagramming, on Snapchat, on taking selfies, what are they, they're walking around, they're going to the restaurants, they're hopefully going to the galleries, I hope French, they're going to jewelry stores, I hope they're doing all of these things, but for gosh sakes, we're gonna have energy in downtown, in this area that's right now neglected and struggling. There'll be enhanced pedestrian connectivity, it'll be porous and inviting. Jeff Denzack talked about this idea of a Second Street Museum Way connecting the arts institutions in our community. And believe it or not, there is less traffic associated with this request than the already approved project on the site, which is only 60 feet tall. I talked about this, high-income residents who are gonna be walking around. Importantly, we're not asking to bend the rules. It conforms with all city plans and guidelines. And importantly, and certainly not last, nor least, the estimated first-year construction fees and taxes to the city are over $7.7 million that would otherwise not be available. Even more importantly, on an annual basis, there'll be bed tax and sales tax of over $1 million for the support of our quality of life in Scottsdale. What's the current fiscal benefit to the city? It's on the city tax rolls, it generates zero tax and benefit for the citizens of Scottsdale. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Any questions or comments from any of the Commissioners?
Comments, no questions?
Commissioner Kush, nothing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bollinger.
I have a question. Mr. Berry, the comment about the additional parking, the public parking being accessible 24 hours, what, what's that? And I heard staff make the presentation, just wanted clarification, exactly, exactly what that means.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bollinger, um, this really is something the city needs to answer, because it'll be the city's parking, although we're building it at a much lower price than the city could ever build it, which means the citizens get a lot more free public parking than they otherwise would, that's open 24/7. That's my understanding, but I'll let the city, because it's gonna be their parking, respond.
Chair Lucio, Commissioner Bollinger, we haven't determined any of the operational aspects of this because it's so fresh, but it would be our understanding that that would be available, uh, the public spaces would be available full-time.
Thank you. Well, I'm on my, I guess, horse.
Please.
Thank you. I want to make a couple of thanks to different folks. Mr. Pejman, I believe, is the name, um, seems like, and he's been a fighter and a advocate for parking downtown since, I can't remember when, back maybe two years ago, is when I started seeing his comments. Thank you very much for that. It seems like the applicant's done their part in working that through, and I feel comfortable that we've made progress on the parking discussion, and it seems like that's, that's happened. Thank you for, um, the, the, the team, the applicant team, the architect, the thread to, um, Frank Lloyd Wright, the thread through the city, historic piece of the design. I think there is a lot of, lot of, uh, praise to go that way, and I think that's probably the strong point of the whole project, is the design, and what it means, and what it means to the public use areas and all those other things that, architecture, this is a zoning case, but I believe that architecture makes the project. One last thing, I want to thank my mother-in-law in a weird way. She was a, um, an employee of Kiva, Lloyd Kiva, in the 50s, an artisan, and she still loves to come to the downtown, and one of her bragging points to me when I was a budding architect was that she made Mr. Wright's clothing. He'd come in for a fitting, and she was with Mr. Kiva, and when I bring her downtown today, she's still very impressed. Of course, she loves to go to Fashion Square, that's her favorite, favorite spot, but, um, just kind of a historic thread through the whole thing, and you, and you hear bits and pieces of stuff that maybe isn't related, but still I feel a connection, so I wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
Very good. Um, one of the questions I had was, and I don't know if this is for you, Mr. Berry, or for staff, um, it's not probably part of our purview, but it was the deed restriction as it relates to height. Um, I don't believe that any of our zoning would have anything to do with that deed restriction, so any of the decisions that we may make tonight as it relates to recommendation for approval, the deed restriction is not part of our purview. Is that a correct statement?
Mr. Chairman, yes, it's correct.
Okay, good. So I just wanted to, any questions that Mr. Ning may, may have, I think that probably should be something that, uh, maybe, um, staff could talk with him directly on, not part of our, our, uh, hearing here this evening. Any other questions? Commissioner Serena, questions, comments?
I think that, uh, both of those comments or questions were parking and the, the deed restriction cover, and so I know that I've, uh, pushed back against some of the projects that have come up recently, primarily because not the height, but there wasn't, didn't seem to be a, a working relationship with the developer and the community. Uh, there were things the community wanted, the developer just was not willing to listen to, which is why I was against it, uh, past projects, but I think seven, eight months ago, had this project come up, we would have had a much different conversation tonight. The meeting might have had the same amount of time of comments, but the comments would have been very, very different. Uh, so I want to say that's a testament to how the community has worked together. People that have, uh, historically been labeled in a certain camp that they're just be against development have shown a willingness to come to the middle, because the developer's showing a willingness to move, too. And I think that's how the process is supposed to work. We see projects sometimes that, that... We see projects sometimes that, that process of finding a middle ground is smooth and easy, and sometimes it's a little bit harder, like it was maybe on this project. Either way, it was great to see people like Mr. Pejman find a middle ground with the developer. That being said, I think that the, the project itself, the architecture, and all the things that come along with it are great, I'll definitely be supporting it, and thank you to the developer and his team, thank you to the community for finding a way to, to come together and make something that eight months ago was quite the, the lightning rod in town, it would become something that I think the entire community is gonna rally around, so, thank you, and I'll be giving my support.
Thank you, Commissioner Serena, Commissioner Kush.
I'm sure I've got a couple of things to say. You know, first off, I'm really excited that it's gonna be more apartments than condos. Scottsdale right now is adding 5,000 people a year, and not all of them can afford to pay a million bucks for a condo downtown. I suspect everyone in this room has lived in an apartment sometime in their life, and I'm always troubled when, when people are opposed to apartments, I mean, it's, these are not gonna be inexpensive apartments, so I think that's a real plus for downtown. We're really lucky, every city, if they're lucky, has one or two great architects. We have a great architect in Swaback Partners, they've designed an absolute world-class project. I've been fortunate enough to judge some international architecture competitions, and I can tell you now, if, once built, this one will probably win every award you can win for architectural design, and the city will, will benefit from that. I think this project will do the opposite, it will not kill downtown, the arts district, it will help it thrive, as you add people who will, who will at night go out and eat in restaurants, go to theater, and visit the, visit the galleries. The height has been approved, I suspect that the people of ancient robes complained about the height of the pyramids. I mean, things happen, we're gonna have more height, and it's, you're right when you say it's about quality, and this is true quality and deserving of the added height, and we do have to go up, because if we keep going out, people are not gonna be happy with that. So I'm totally in support of this project, I'm excited that McDonald Corporation has selected our city and ARC to build this wonderful project, and I'll be in support of it, and hopefully I can be allowed to make the motion.
Very good. I'll make one statement, and just say that I'm also in support of the project. I do want to recognize Mr. and Mrs. Jarson, you made some compelling statements, we appreciate that very much. I, I think that it's an evolution of our city, but I do appreciate the comments that you made and, and the arguments that you made. I think that we're very blessed to have the quality of development that we're looking at having here today, and I'm excited that it's gonna be part of our city if our city council does approve it. So, based on that information, I would like to request a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kush.
I move to make a recommendation to city council for approval of cases 13ZN 2018 and 1AB 2019. Per the staff recommended stipulations, after determining that the planned block development overlay criteria have been met, and after determining that the proposed zoning district amendment and abandonment are consistent and conform with the adopted general plan.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kush, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Serena, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Curtis, anything additional?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I ask for a motion for adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Bollinger, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Serena, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes four to zero, thank you.